The next item on the agenda is the ITEP application for ExxonMobil Corporation. Uh, thank you. Part A, Application 20161911, and Part B, 20161914. So at this time, I will give the floor to ExxonMobil to make their initial presentation.
I know it's been a long evening. Okay. Will you be advancing or it's here? Okay, thank you. This one right here? Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Gloria Moncada. I'm the Plant Manager for the ExxonMobil refinery here in Baton Rouge. Thank you for allowing us to present our projects to you. I started with ExxonMobil here in Baton Rouge 26 years ago, and I was very happy that last year we returned and made Baton Rouge our home again. You know, and if I come across passionate over the next couple of minutes, most of that's because I'm Italian, but also because I'm proud of our employees, I'm passionate about our company, and I'm passionate about the work we do and the contributions that we make to the community. I know you have a very important role here on the school board. Your leadership has always been critical in guiding your school, our school systems, our community, and now you have an important say in also our economy moving forward. So I appreciate your thoughtful consideration this evening. These are really exciting times for us. You've probably seen this chart before, but basically the solid lines are pointing to mega projects that ExxonMobil has announced. And you see a dotted line where we hope to turn into a solid line so we can bring mega projects to Baton Rouge as well. But to do that, we've got to keep growing, and the corporation has committed $20 billion of growth in the Gulf Coast, and we want a big piece of that for Louisiana. When we grow Baton Rouge, Baton Rouge grows as well. And as you know, that increases property tax, sales tax, the entire tax base, so it's a win-win for all of us. The outcome that we have tonight does send a strong message on stability and predictability. As a business, those are the things we look at, and it shapes how we think about investments in the future, whether they're here or somewhere else. And I do sit in on corporate reviews, and I see how the incentive program makes or breaks a project decision. I did want to walk you through, and I believe the board members have a paper copy in front of them that's got a little more detail about the application, the 2017 application in particular, because this is a bit of an oddity. We've kind of fallen into a gap. So let me just walk you quickly through the decision process that we went through. So for a project, these projects in 2017, decisions were being discussed and thought about back all the way in 2012 and 2013. And as you can imagine, you know, we sit down and we're looking at the economics of the projects, we're looking at the tax incentives and the tax structures between our Baton Rouge facility, Baytown, and Beaumont. And at that point, we make a decision based on current ITEP rules and allowances, and we make our application. We made our application as per the guidelines back in 2016. We made our advanced application, excuse me, our advanced notification. As you know, it was all in this timeframe where the executive order was issued, ITEP was changing, the local bodies were, you know, were working through, we were trying to assist, but ultimately, the advice and the feedback was given for us to hold off, hold off on making the applications. And then when the go-ahead was given, once the ITEP rules were decided, we went ahead and put in our application, just like the nearly 60 other companies across Louisiana, and one other major manufacturer here in Baton Rouge, using the same process. In fact, we revised the application to meet the current ITEP rules that matched the executive order, and so we're down to the two applications. The two applications, the one I'll present here in a second represents $67 million. That's down from the original application of $152 million that was originally done back in 2016. I want you just to be aware that this does matter. It's more than just these two projects. This does signal whether we can trust that Louisiana's tax incentive programs are stable and that the rules are upheld and not changed in the middle of the play. And the reason that's important for us is because we assume that when we take these investment decisions, that capital decision is based on, you know, was that tax structure going to be incentivized or not? And when we take that decision, we trust that Louisiana will also uphold their part of the rules. So that's our appeal. The next page is about the refinery application. That's $64 million of investment out of the 67. My colleague will be presenting the other investment. And essentially, the $64 million is made up of projects that essentially expanded one of our gasoline production units by 40% and doubled our premium diesel production. These projects increase our competitiveness. We are actively assessing a refinery, a large refinery project, and these projects position us well to compete for that project. So again, ITEP does matter. Tonight matters on how we think about future investment. We need your support. Texas sometimes has better advantage on infrastructure or proximity to raw materials. The ITEP program helps level that playing field so that we can compete hard and draw investment towards Louisiana. I need your support tonight to be able to advocate for future growth here. If we grow, we build a bigger tax base, which increases your budget, so win-win for all of us. Help me win projects for Louisiana. Thank you for hearing me out, and I'd like to turn it over to my colleague.
My name's Steve Hamilton. I'm the Baton Rouge Polyolefins Plant Manager. I was actually before you all several weeks ago talking about a polypropylene growth project. So tonight, I'd like to just talk about the Polyolefins 2017 ITEP application. So this is not near the size of what Gloria, my colleague Gloria, was talking about in the refinery. The total investment here was $3 million. This was made up of several projects of different instrumentation, monitoring devices, but the bottom line with these projects, they were put in to keep us competitive and also position ourselves for the potential for future growth or future investment. This is not unlike the same type of projects we would have been doing over the last several years in the other half of my plant, which makes polypropylene. Maintaining and keeping our plants highly competitive is what allows us to make a case to our corporation to come back at some point when it's time for growth and make the case for something like the polypropylene growth project. If you remember, it's, you know, over $500 million of investment and 65 jobs. This is another part of our plan. We make polyethylene. These projects basically do the same thing, try to position us over the long term. The parts of the plant that we're trying to maintain in a competitive position, in some cases, were built in the '60s, '70s, and '80s. So we need to constantly upgrade and keep ourselves competitive. So what sort of the impact? This does not have job growth. This is job retention. We do have 244 employee jobs, $25.6 million in payroll. So this particular project would have 52,000 in sales tax, 201,000 in new property taxes. Just for comparison about what we're looking at here, Polyolefins plant pays about $1.3 million annually in property taxes, and this particular abatement is about $24,500 a year. So maybe not huge in terms of numbers we've been talking about, but, you know, this is the way we position ourselves. This is the way we've been doing projects and doing ITEP projects for the last several years. So that's our project itself.
Ms. Bernard has a question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Actually, my question was for the first speaker. Oh, hi. The Plant Manager at the plant, the main plant?
Yes, I'm the Refinery Manager.
Or maybe both of you. The Refinery Manager, right. Maybe both of you can answer this. So I'm wondering why not submit the application at the beginning of the project when you're planning it? So why do we wait until there is completion? Can you explain that for me?
Absolutely. So we followed the rules as they were in place at the time, where we made an advanced notification, which is before we start the project. So we make the advanced notification, followed that. We did that in 2016, before the project was even under construction. The projects were under construction. So that is, we followed exactly the rules that were in place at the time. We're kind of stuck in the middle right now because the rules were changing, and we were asked to hold back the application.
Who asked you that?
City Finance.
Yeah.
The city asked you to wait until we had?
We asked for guidance in the city, I think Finance Director, if I got that correct. They suggested that we wait until the rules were clear before we actually filed the application. That's why we're here now, even though these projects are kind of on the back end.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that explanation because there's an argument made that, in retrospect, that these should not be granted because it is, quote, "an incentive." But I wanted you to clarify that, and I appreciate you clarifying that. Thank you.
Ms. Monica, I also have a clarifying question. On your slide and on the next slide, you talk about on the last line, potential abatement of $600,000 a year approximately. Is that the abatement for total East Baton Rouge, or is that the abatement for the school district? Do you know?
I don't know. That's the total, I would believe, right? That's all our?
Hi. Clay Fuller, ExxonMobil Property Tax. That is the total abatement across all local entities. Per year for these two projects, school board only, is approximately $288,000 a year.
So the $600,000, so it's about $288,000 for that project?
For the refinery and Polyolefins combined.
Oh, combined, okay. Well, the Polyolefins, I'm just using math here, but that would probably be about $10,000 a year?
Eleven.
Eleven. Oh, that's pretty good. I'm an engineer. $11,000, okay.
And the remaining $277,000.
Yeah, $277,000. Okay, because there's many, many numbers thrown around, so I just wanted to be clear on what the numbers were.
Absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you. Please continue. I'm sorry.
That's not a problem. That's why we're here. I just have two more quick slides. I wanted to talk about, you know, almost all these projects, everything we're doing. Capital investment is not only revenue, but it's also jobs. This growing with the Gulf Initiative that Gloria sort of kicked off on her first slide. I mean, this is having a huge impact with various plants that we have here in the Baton Rouge area and across the river in West Baton Rouge. We are at max hiring. I mean, if you look at the number, we've hired over 1,000 people in employee jobs over the last five years. In my particular plant, much smaller plant, you look at the numbers, employees and contractors, I'm the Polyolefins plant there, it's about 350 people. A week and a half ago, I have 15 process operators and seven mechanics that are starting to be trained. So 22 is a big number for me. If I have 244 employees and I bring in 22 people, I almost just increased, you know, my headcount by 10%. So the real whole point of this slide is we continue to hire. This growing with the Gulf and the major investment is driving us to continue, you know, to hire and create jobs and good-paying jobs.
I do have, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
We've gotten many, many comments and emails and things saying that Exxon is losing jobs. How does, where would that come from? How would that be put together to come up and say that Exxon has cut employment? Do you have any idea?
I can speak to some of the, let's call it misinformation that maybe has been out there, but I can only speak for the Polyolefins plant. But in my case, in round numbers, I have about 250 employee jobs. At any given time, you know, if I look at that and I say in January I have 250 jobs, let's say towards the end of the year, 15 people retire. I would be down to, at the snapshot in time at the end of the year, I could be below that because people go out. Let's just keep it simple and say retire. Well, I still need those people. I'll make up that for some period of time with overtime and people working more overtime, but I will come back and hire a class. Now, I might not hire until January, but in January, I'm probably going to hire 20 or 25 people to get above my 250. So any particular snapshot in time, I mean, I can't tell people when they retire. They get to choose when they retire, or they go out in disability or sickness. So the numbers will go up and down. In my experience, over a long 33 years with Exxon, you know, those numbers can bounce around like 10%, so if I have 250 employees, it can be 225 to 275. It will bounce around. So if you pick a snapshot in time, you can see where, well, there it was, and I went down 20 jobs. Well, I'm still running the same plant, I still have the same requirement for people, and we will hire people back. It may just not be, you know, at any particular point in time.
That's correct. So really, you've got to think about it in terms of positions. And when you look at, over the course of the last decade or more, we've been growing the number of positions because the plants are growing. So they're just difficult, you know, when you draw the line in the sand, like Steve said, you could have just had a bunch of retirements, or you could have just had a new hiring class, and that moves numbers around. What you've got to look at is the number of positions that we are employing.
Steve, yes.
You have 250 employees plus 347 contractors?
No, that's employees plus contractors. Round numbers, 250 employees, about 100 contractors.
Okay, 100 contractors. Okay, okay. So the contractor figure includes, oh, I see it. I see it. Okay, at the top.
Yeah, it's not exactly lined up with the numbers. Sorry about that.
It isn't really in that column exactly, so the heading isn't.
Yeah, the 7,000 is employees plus contractors.
That's what I wanted to ask. Thank you.
Okay. So I just have one last slide, and I apologize if I'm going over time. I mean, I think this slide is really important. If you look at the blue line, that's capital investment. So this is the capital investment that we're paying taxes on, direct property taxes on. And you can see that, you know, the amount of investment that we're making continues to increase. And if you look at on the right-hand side, which is the property taxes paid, you know, if you go back to 2011, that number is roughly $29.5 million. We're currently paying over $33 million. And you see a large increase in the amount of taxes we're paying. In particular, that number comes from, you know, after we have property tax exemptions and when they roll off the books, then a big project from 10 years ago hits the books, and you see those numbers go up. So to me, it's all about capital investment. Maybe just kind of another data point, you see where we're up around $400 million of capital investment. When I came to speak to you about the polypropylene growth project, that's, you know, more than double that number in a given year. I mean, that project is going to be over $500 million of capital investment. So it will drive with the 80%, and then, you know, at some point in the future, is what we need to do. It's what you, in my opinion, you need to be looking for in order to make sure that we continue to grow, we continue to invest, and over time, you know, we don't see that property tax pay number going down, but we see it continuing to increase. So, oh, sorry. So I ask that you, you know, give consideration. I appreciate your time, and I hope we can count on your support. Yes, Ms. Con.
What is the risk of Exxon not investing in our area but investing in growth in other
I think for any, I mean, each individual project that comes up, whether, you know, so in the business I'm in, within chemicals, we are investing in, you know, ethylene plants, polyethylene, polypropylene. When the market and the business suggests that we need to invest because the market's growing, we think we can make money, you know, we'll start looking at where are we going to put that investment? What's the risk? The risk is exactly what we've been seeing. You know, if it needs to be in the Gulf Coast, it's going to be between Texas and Louisiana. And almost everything, with the exception of our polypropylene growth project, has already gone to Texas. We have over $10 billion of investments that's already moved to Texas. So there, we have one, you know, we're very proud of that, we're glad it's coming to Baton Rouge. You know, the next one, the next one, the next one. It needs to be, you know, that's why we're trying to position ourselves. I mean, Gloria, I've lived in Baton Rouge, you know, most of my whole career. I've got kids here, they went to school here, I've got grandkids here, I'm all in. I'm all in on ExxonMobil, I'm all in on Louisiana. I want to see these projects here. So we're fighting for them, and this is a big part, you know, consistent. ITEP is important, but more important is consistent, fair treatment so that we know when we do our decision-making and we can count on, you know, kind of what we base the project on.
Yeah, the final add to that is if we don't keep investing, for example, in our refinery, I'll use as an example. I've worked at some of our refineries that we've eventually sold because they've not been profitable. We haven't been able to keep them competitive, and those refineries are slowing down, idling units. Frankly, we shed 100 jobs at once trying to get back to, you know, trying to make some money. That's why it's vitally important in Baton Rouge that I need to keep the refinery competitive so I don't backslide. You know, we've seen some job cuts at other companies. I'm happy to say we're hiring 300 people this year, just in our Baton Rouge facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. Any, I guess at this time, we need a motion? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to approve the ITEP exemptions as listed in the, anything? We're going to go to comment. We're not there yet. We have to make a motion first. So the motion is to approve the two ITEP applications. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Baloo. Ms. Bernard, you have the floor.
You didn't turn it off, did you?
I'm sorry. Does anyone, does anyone else on the board who made the motion is Ms. Bernard and is seconded by Mr. Baloo? Are there any comments from the board? Seeing none, we will start with the comments from the audience. And I feel like a casino dealer here. First of all, Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Jerry Kennedy. Next, we have Zoran Pranjil. It is not wished to speak but supports the recommendation. Next is James Barrett Jr. or Senior. Next is Mr. William Kelly. Next is Mr. Gary Meis. Gary Meis, M-E-I-S-E. I'm sorry? It's Gary on the sheet. Next is Mr. John Nolan. Angela Reams Brown? Was that Brown? And after her would be Reverend Cleo Lo.
Good afternoon. Well, it's good evening, good night. I'll see you guys tomorrow. I'm Angela Reams Brown again, President of the East Baton Rouge Federation of Teachers. I come before you this afternoon not because I don't understand the importance of bringing jobs to Louisiana, specifically Baton Rouge. But what I do understand as a 33-year veteran of this school system, the need for our board members to put our children first. Your job is not to bring jobs to Baton Rouge, because if we don't improve our educational system, we won't have anyone to fill those jobs. We are losing teachers daily because of our salaries, because of morale, because of our working conditions. These are some things that you can make a change tonight by not approving these applications. You know, Exxon wants us to believe that they're going to pack up and leave Baton Rouge. That's highly unlikely. Can you imagine packing up all of that on scenic highway and going somewhere else? I can't imagine it. That's a scare tactic. The things that they're doing for this school district are the things that good neighbors do. When you come into somebody's neighborhood or you move into somebody's neighborhood, you are supposed to be a good neighbor. Yes, you're giving grants to some of our teachers, and we appreciate that. You're bringing innovative programs into our schools. We most definitely appreciate that. But if you pay your fair share of taxes, we can give grants to our own teachers. We can give our teachers and support workers a raise, seeing that they have not had one in 10 years. We can bring their salaries up to the southern average so that we can retain good teachers. So I implore you tonight to not make a decision on what's best for jobs for Baton Rouge, but what's best for the students of the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. Thank you.
Thank you. I will ask again that we hold down applause and cheering because we have, it's been a long night already, and we have a long night still to go, and I want to give everyone a chance to speak, and that just slows everything down. Reverend, floor is yours.
Thank you so kindly. If it pleased the board, I have a little order that I would like to present, what we have to say tonight, and I would like for Reverend Button to come at this time, and I will follow him if that's okay with the board. All right.
Totally fine, but the time is running.
Good evening. I'm Pastor Mike Button of St. Paul Lutheran Church here in Baton Rouge. I've been a pastor for 41 years, and I thought I knew something about long meetings. I don't, obviously. Exxon is a bedrock institution of this community, and I can testify that in person. When my father retired from Exxon Plastics in Scotlandville, after 30-plus years of service, he left with a retirement package that sustained him through many long and happy years. When my, when just three years ago, my brother-in-law retired from Exxon Chemical, he and my sister were launched into a happy career of full-time grandparenting. Our argument is most definitely not with Exxon. I'm all for these types of tax incentives when they create new jobs, when they bring in new manufacturing and enrich our state and the quality of life for all of our citizens. But when exemptions are granted simply as a matter of course, millions of tax dollars are surrendered without any perceptible return on investment, when our schools are deprived of vital funding to underwrite projects that would happen even without those funds, or as is the case tonight, already happened two years ago, then that's on us, and that's where we have to draw some lines. Tonight, you have the pencil in your hand. Please, draw the line. Affirm, encourage, celebrate our corporate citizens, but not at the expense of our teachers and students, staff, and all the institutional support they need and deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. I assume next you want Ms. Conero?
Yes, Conero.
Conero.
Good evening. My name's Maggie Conero. So I want to discuss four basic facts about these exemptions. The first, two projects asking for an incentive that has already been completed. Most of the construction on these projects took place in March and April in 2017. Now, in 2019, you're being asked to approve an incentive on work that was completed nearly two years ago. Secondly, let's talk about the timeline. It is not accurate, as it's been suggested, that the rules on these exemptions change during the play. during the play. Governor Edwards signed his executive order establishing local control over ITEP, as we said earlier in the evening, on June 24th, 2016. That executive order grandfathered in all exemption requests with advance notices submitted prior to that date. It's true that the advance notices for these projects were submitted in 2016, but they were submitted in December of 2016, six months later. So, you can just say 2016, but when in 2016, well after this executive order. So, the thing about the timeline and the rules changing during the play is not accurate. I just want to note that these applications were initiated, the applicant knew, they were fully aware that local discretion would be taken into consideration once these came across our desks, okay? Third, the two facilities seeking an exemption today, the refinery and the Polyolefins Plant, have received 116 separate exemptions from Baton Rouge property taxes over the last 20 years alone. You have that list in front of you. 116 exemptions. That leaves them very heavily tax exempt. You have those numbers in front of you. Today, in 2019, prior to the current exemptions, 60% of the property value at the refinery is exempted from school taxes. 60%. That's over $1 billion in property at a $1.7 billion facility is exempt. 62% of the property at Polyolefins Plant is currently tax exempt. That's $137 million in property at a $220 million facility. Those figures are taken directly from the assessors' records, which now show the exempt rates. You have those documents in front of you as well. The fourth and last basic fact that I want to bring up is that my mom's a teacher, and she's here tonight. She's earning less today than she did 10 years ago, and she's one of your best teachers. She's nationally board certified, she teaches ESL, she speaks multiple languages, and when you take, when you adjust for inflation, she takes home less than she did 10 years ago. My request is that when you make the decision tonight, do the right thing by her, by the school, and by the children of our community. Thanks.
May I ask one question? You referred us to the data in your handout here.
Yes.
And one of the data in here shows existing jobs. And you run down this list, what does that existing jobs column represent? Because it shows 242 jobs in, at the, in 2016?
Which page are you looking at?
I'm looking at this page of the data that, I'm sorry, I read things that people give me.
No, that's great.
But, but it lists these jobs, and it's a falling number from 2,724 to 242. And obviously, that can't be saying that Exxon only has 242 jobs.
So, those are, those are on this specific application numbers. In the second column, that's based on a specific application, like an ITEP application.
It's the 116 exemptions that's been listed.
I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am?
It's the 116 exemptions.
That's not like the years, that's not.
Yeah, no, I understand exemptions, but they have existing jobs as a column. And I don't understand what existing jobs is, and, and where does that play into this? I have no idea of what that column is.
Let me find out exactly. I'm pretty sure we just mean jobs, but I can figure out why it exactly says existing.
Okay, because, you know, one of the things that we're trying to take into account here is there's, there's lots and lots of data flying around, so I'm really trying to understand what is the base data for this, and I can't, can't reconcile that column.
Okay, let me find out.
All righty, good. Good evening to each of you. I am Reverend Cleo Ernest Low, pastor of the Greater Mount Carmel Baptist Church of Scotlandville located at 1414 Sora Street in Uptown Baton Rouge. And if you want to know what Uptown Baton Rouge is, that's the new moniker, new name that we've given to North Baton Rouge. We are a part of the Uptown cluster of Together Baton Rouge. We help create Together Baton Rouge as a vehicle to promote public policy that is shaped by our diverse, but yet common religious traditions. Two years ago, you all did not have a say in ITEP, but now you do. My whole ministry in part is aimed at equipping people to do the right things. The right thing is not always easy to do. The right thing often takes good, honorable, just, and moral courage. In doing the right thing, we sometimes do not please our friends, even in times such as this right now. The most righteous person I know wants said in part, render unto Caesar the things that are Caesar. So, rather succinctly and means that I'm going on and on, we ask you tonight to do the right thing by beginning to deny these exemptions, and to develop a strategy here that's going to invest in our children, in our teachers, in our schools, to yield 100-fold, 60-fold, 30-fold fruitfulness that shall begin to end the deficits that we are facing in our school district. To God be the glory. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Manchester, followed by Ms. Tanya Nyman.
Good evening, my name is Megan Manchester. I think I know most of you in the room. I've had some very detailed discussions with you. I have spent a lot of time in, in some of your schools, especially schools like Woodlawn. We did our big Nimsy celebration there, had really good success. We brought an aquaponics facility to Brookstown Middle, and now at Astuma High School. So, I'm very proud of the volunteer work that our company does in the community, especially myself. I volunteer personally at many of the schools. ITEP is a key consideration for how my managers make investment decisions. It helps us compete. As Steve and Gloria alluded to earlier, our company is operating right now in the spirit of growth. There's a lot of growth on the horizon. I started my career in Baton Rouge, I'd like to stay in Baton Rouge for the long term, and in order for me to do that, we need to help bring opportunity here. We need to be able to compete for that opportunity. And ITEP helps us compete. It's a key consideration. Now, I realize there's a lot of attention on these very unique applications because the investments were made in 2017. I realize there's that, you know, well, the investments were already complete. However, the advances were filed in 2016, then the executive order was issued. And so, there was a period of flux, and we were advised to wait on those applications until the new rules were promulgated. And we did just that, like many other companies in Louisiana. However, ExxonMobil is being singled out for that, for, for following the rules and following the advice that we were given. So, I urge you tonight to please think, you know, as we're operating, operating in the spirit of growth, please help us bring predictability to not only the parish, but to our state. Economic development amongst business and industry is, is a promise, really, that our state has made to business and industry. Help us keep that promise. Help us bring investment here. Help, help us drive economic development in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Up next is Ms. Nyman, and then after that, C.S.A.P.O.S.S.
Can I have that answer for you?
Yes, ma'am, would you please?
Yeah, sure. So, what you're looking at is this is information pulled directly from the application. So, if you went back to, the small print says 228, 1998, you could look, and on the application, it asks Exxon, they would say, what's your existing job number? So, this, this is just an overview of all the applications. When they were filling out applications in 97, they said 2724, and this year, they're putting numbers at, in the 200s. So, that's from Exxon on their applications. An advanced notice, excuse me.
Yeah, that's obviously incorrect.
It's from the advanced notice, though.
It may be, ma'am, I'm sorry, wait.
There are two different, if you'll notice, most of those, about two-thirds of these are for the refinery. So, today, the refinery numbers are about 1,256. Then it starts over chronologically with the Poly, thank you, plant, back in 2018.
Excuse me. Okay, thank you.
If I could offer some clarification here?
I asked the question, so I will give you a chance to answer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Ms. Nyman, would you mind, okay? No, it's fine.
The numbers, specifically the ones that included 242, were from advanced notifications. Those are more or less a notification to the state that work is going to begin, that we are going to plan on perhaps pursuing an ITEP exemption on. And those are, those are estimate numbers from within that year before, so they're not the dead-on numbers that go onto the application itself, and therefore aren't really what we're trying to hold ourselves to.
Thank you very much. Thanks for clearing that up. Now, Ms. Nyman, thank you. Thank you for being considerate.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Tanya Nyman. I have two children in East Baton Rouge Parish Public Schools. So, maybe it'll sound like I'm picking on Exxon, but I suspect that there's lots of other corporations that'll have similar numbers, but I thought I'd like to draw your attention to Exxon's 2017 audited financial statements. So, Exxon is incredibly profitable. It had $82 billion in U.S. revenue for 2017. It had $155 billion in non-U.S. revenue, and Exxon cleared $20 billion in profit alone. Please know that they incurred a tax, income tax liability, but they did not pay it. They get to save that and, and use it to pay, draw down their tax liability for following years, right? It becomes like a credit. But, for non-income taxes. So, let's look at that. Now, we also should remember that corporations' primary mission is to minimize their expenditures and maximize their profits. And apparently, in order to minimize its expenditures, Exxon has been quite successful in shaping policy to minimize the amount of taxes it pays regardless of the effect on the common good. Exxon paid only 4% of its U.S. revenue in non-income taxes. In comparison, Exxon paid 17% in non-income taxes to countries other than the U.S. So, they pay a 17, essentially, I would say they're, a 17% effective tax rate to any country not in the U.S. The U.S., though, they only pay a 4% effective tax rate in non-income tax, in non-income taxes. So, the claim that Exxon needs more tax incentives to agree to do business here is poppycock. Other countries are holding them to a higher standard. The 17% non-income tax rate didn't deter them from doing 155 million, billion, wait, million, which one is it? Million, 100 million in revenue. Exxon CEO received a $17.5 million compensation package for 2017 alone. That's what he gets paid pretty much annually. Quite a bit of that is in stock options. Those stock options rely on him minimizing his expenditures and maximizing his profits, which means that he's coming to a state which has one of the highest poverty rates, to a school system whose children, 82% of the children in East Baton Rouge Parish School System are qualified for free and reduced lunch, they live in poverty. And yet, their CEO, 17.5 million, is coming to us and asking us to forego taxes in order to incentivize projects that clearly don't need any incentive. So, I don't have, I don't have enough time to delineate the ways that this is immoral, but it is immoral.
Please, this is the last time I will ask, please, we have a meeting to get through, so please, let's hold down the applause. It's C.S.A.P.O.S.S.
That's Sapos, thank you. My name is Brendan Sapos, and I come before you as a voter and a taxpayer in District 9. As far as these exemptions, we face a huge deficit in our school system next year, so we can't afford to offer tax giveaways that give no benefit back to the people of East Baton Rouge Parish. The proposed exemptions include work that was done almost two years ago that failed to meet even the most basic tests of public benefit, and that should be rejected. In general, we need public transparency and accountability for how we make decisions that needs to be through a clear and consistent process for evaluation with public input. We also need public transparency and accountability from you all as the school board as to how these funds will be used when you get them back, so that taxpayers can feel confident that this money will be well-spent for the children of our schools. We live in a time of unprecedented distrust in the power and efficacy of our government and its processes. So, it is up to each and every one of you as elected officials to work tonight to restore the people's trust by voting no on frivolous corporate giveaways such as these. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Mary Trigg, and she would be followed by Dr. Tia Mills.
Good evening, my name is Mary Trigg, and I'm a teacher here in East Baton Rouge and a taxpayer. Before I went back to school for education, I got a degree in economics, and the first thing that we learned in Econ 101 is the rule that people respond to incentives. That rule is pretty handy in the classroom, as you can imagine, and in the case of industrial tax exemptions, our goal as educators to give the best possible education to all of our students every day is misaligned with that of ITEP applicants to maximize profits for their shareholders. U.S. local policymakers have finally been granted the opportunity to fix those misaligned incentives. Giving a retroactive tax break in the service of incentivizing economic growth and job creation is absurd. This is like if I told my eighth graders, "I'll give you 10 bonus points today if you eat, sleep, and checked your phone last week." You better believe they would take it, and they would definitely complain if I decided to rescind the offer, but it wouldn't help anybody. I urge you to reject these applications so that we can give all of our students excellent education that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mills, and she would be followed by Mr. Finney.
Sorry, Mr. Cody, my name is Dr. Tia Mills. I worked hard for that, four years. You're good, you're good. I'm the president of East Baton Rouge Parish Association of Educators, and tonight, I want to speak some truth to power myself. We're not in the business of supporting businesses, we're in the business of educating children. That's first and foremost. That's what we should be supporting. It amazed me, it was quite fascinating, that we received emails from an individual that was speaking in the best interest of ExxonMobil, and I'm quite surprised that they had access to our email system. That was quite intriguing. I didn't know that they had the ability to do that, especially saying that to, to us during our work hours. But that's neither here nor there. We have an issue at hand where we should be talking about survival here. Ultimately, that's what is going on at this present time. We are in a deficit budget, I'm pretty sure that many of you have heard that time and time again. What about this system? You haven't rejected an exemption yet. How do you know that it's magic money if you don't deny the exemption to see how much money we will actually receive? We are looking to possibly cut millions of dollars. That means resources that can go towards our students, and a ton of positions that we desperately need in order to best serve our children. What are you gonna do when there's no more money left in order to adequately support this system? Think about the message that you'll send tonight if you, if you do not deny this, these exemptions. If you do not deny these exemptions, and we continuously go in a deficit budget, don't worry about it. Lights out, show's over. We are on life support, point-blank period, and we deserve this money. We are on life support, point-blank period, and we deserve this money. That is what's best for us at this time. I urge you to deny these exemptions tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Finney, and then he'll be followed by Jody Montalaro. Mr. Finney.
I hate to be a jerk, but I spent many years on my PhD, too.
You have only James on here. She had doctor on hers. It's my fault.
Fair enough. Exxon's representatives did not specify how much subsidy they're counting on from each of those three school systems in Texas that are getting the plant expansions. I'd be curious what that number is. Let me draw your attention to the bold goal up on the wall to Mr. Goday's right. The East Baton Rouge Parish School System will be a top-10 school district by 2020? I have bad eyes, but I think it says, "Building an innovative and globally competitive educational system for all families, educational choice for all families." I missed the comment on economic development being your responsibility in that bold goal. I think maybe because you didn't put it there. So I'm baffled that you would consider maintaining some of the highest sales tax rates, including that 1% that just got renewed, highest sales tax rates in the nation, so that you can support the shareholders of a hugely profitable multinational corporation. $288,000 a year might be peanuts for Exxon, but that's several teachers. So I urge you to consider, because a tax abatement is functionally equivalent to a direct expenditure, please consider whether that is the best way to spend $288,000. Would that be better spent on books, perhaps? Several more staff members or teachers, perhaps? So it's Exxon's job to request the subsidy. It's your job to decide the best way that $288,000 should be spent, and I would urge you to reject these applications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Jody Montalaro, and following that would be Gary Meese. I understand he's back in the audience now.
Good evening, and thank you all for taking this much time this evening. I'm Jody Montalaro, Vice President of Public Affairs with Entergy Louisiana. I'm here tonight on behalf of Entergy and our CEO, Philip May, who could not be here this evening to support our support for this application. A great source of pride for Entergy is our commitment to Baton Rouge and the communities we serve. Annually, our company is proud to say that we provide more than $6 million in grants to Louisiana organizations on an annual basis, with approximately 40% of those dollars and those contributions going towards education and literacy. Another portion of those dollars go towards poverty solutions, and certainly they go towards environmental assistance, cultural, and also to economic development. An example of our most recent support is our major announcement with Southern University consisting of a $2 million pledge over a multi-year period for the College of Engineering and our significant financial support and pledge to the promised neighborhood application that LSU and Southern made jointly to assist families and schools in North Baton Rouge. As a community partner, though, we are quick to recognize others who also provide invaluable contributions that support our friends and neighbors here in Baton Rouge and beyond. And ExxonMobil is one of those partners. Exxon was able to bring $13 million to the state through the National Math and Science Initiative, which is having real impacts in the classroom for children from all walks of life. Over the past three years, Exxon, I think they have spoken to this evening, have created a lot of jobs, both through local employment but also through contractor employment. Entergy and Exxon are currently exploring additional opportunities to work together on future community endeavors. We were recently approached by Exxon to explore supporting the Small Business Resource Center, a program that would be focused on helping the smaller businesses to grow. We're excited to advance these conversations with our partner. But as you can appreciate, productive community partnerships follow financial investments by companies in their businesses. Exxon did take a leap of faith that the state would recognize the long-term benefits of its investment in Louisiana. And despite uncertainty that was in existence as the rules were continuously crafted for ITEP, this community partner placed an additional investment in Baton Rouge. Companies throughout the nation and outside of the country watch, and they watch what happens with investments and how things, such as tax incentives, which are offered, and how they are honored. They decide, make big decisions on making future investments in the state of Louisiana and certainly in Baton Rouge. I thank you for your patience and time this evening, and I respectfully request that you approve the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Meese, and then followed by Ed Jimenez.
It's Gary Mize.
Mize, I'm sorry.
No, that is totally fine. It gets mispronounced all the time. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but the reason I am speaking, when Ms. Bernard brought up the question, which was a very pertinent question to, and I don't know your name, ma'am, but the plant manager for the refinery about why was the projects that are being brought forth, why are they being brought forth now when the projects were already completed? And you said, and what I understood was that it's because they were basically asked to wait because of the specific circumstances that are happening right now and that the city officials here asked them to wait, which made it sound like this is an exceptional circumstance. And I work in the TBR office and have looked at all of the Fastlane applications in the past from Exxon and have gone to the CNI Board. And it made it sound like this was an extraordinary situation, and that's not true. And so I just wanted to clarify that. One of the dysfunctionalities of what's happened in the past with these applications is that they're always already completed when they go before for board approval. So when you go and look at the Fastlane applications, when they do go before, at the time that they do get approval, the projects are completed. So yes, this is an exceptional circumstance to the extent that we are now going to local approval, but this idea of a project being completed at the time of approval is not new. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
And the next speaker after this will be Mary Sue Garey.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Ed Jimenez, and I'm the Director of Business and Economic Development for Entergy Louisiana. I'm also the Chair of the Business Development Advisory Committee for the Baton Rouge Area Chamber. And I also serve on BRAC's Board of Directors. So I'm here tonight offering you our Board's position of support on behalf of BRAC, which is a 1,500-member business organization in Baton Rouge that hires thousands of people in Baton Rouge, these 1,500 companies. As I mentioned, I work for Entergy, who's been a longtime member of BRAC. We are active partners with our state-level, regional, and local economic development allies to help further enhance the local economies of our service areas by attracting jobs and capital investment to our state. We're coming to you tonight with a request of approval for ExxonMobil's property tax abatement for their 2017 expansions. This request is via the Industrial Tax Exemption Program or ITEP. ExxonMobil is seeking to obtain the local jurisdictions' approvals, and your approval is very important to the company and our local economy. The projects include, as you've heard, $145.6 million and $2.97 million investment respectively by the company, and will create 18 new jobs and a new payroll of $1.89 million. Both projects will provide over $6 million in local sales and property taxes over the next 20 years. The property tax abatement for the project was a critical piece of the ExxonMobil decision to invest in our community and remains equally as important today for future projects. Also, ExxonMobil is valuing further growth, like you heard tonight, that can be done anywhere, particularly in Texas. And I can speak to that. As I said, I do economic development for Entergy. And Entergy is a four-state utility. We operate in Texas. We see what's happening in Texas. I'm not here because of Entergy, because if the project goes to Texas, I get to serve that project, too. I get to self-power there, too. So that's not what we're here for. But this approval would be the fantastic step forward in trying to attract their future growth to our great state and to the capital region. It is for these reasons that we see this investment as critical to support and to continue to send an enthusiastic pro-investment message to a major economic driver company for our region and our state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Sue Garey, and Philip Fetterman would be next. Mary Sue?
Good evening, Board members. I'm gonna start with a Latin quotation. The only thing I can remember, "Patientia est rara virtus." And if you know your Latin, that means patience is a rare virtue. Just is appropriate for tonight as we go for marathon status here. I was just told that the jobs number were on the applications. I think the one for your question, Mr. Goday. We are checking on that, but I believe that is accurate, and we'll confirm it to you and the other Board members later. I also would like some help. This is my time here, and I will try to make it in. My name is Mary Sue Garey. I'm a retired professor from LSU and Southern, and I have been a resident of Baton Rouge since 1971. I'm pleased to talk to you tonight and delighted that the public has a chance to weigh in on these important decisions. It's been interesting to sit here and listen to the passion that people bring to education in Baton Rouge. I have been coming to the meeting since it's been possible, since you have been dealing with ITEP. And what I want you to know today is that I've got some sponsors here, and they are the students that I help tutor, the Bernard Terrace students that I help tutor. And I think what is really important here is for you to realize that if you give money to Exxon, you are taking it away from my students that I am helping, Chasely, Chandon, Kirsten, Karen, Aiden, and Caitlin. So just be sure that you understand, these are pre-K and kindergartners who are in the Hype Program at First United Methodist Church. And we really haven't said this, but they have a name, and they have a face. And what you do with your money matters a lot. It is a matter of morality, and you, none of you, were voted in to do economic development. There has not been any ballot on economic development. If you want to have such a thing, you can do that. Your responsibility are our students. They are the very same question that Mr. Goday asked about the charter school. What can we do that is best for the students? Well, I'll tell you what you can do, and you can take the money. You, and you, and you, and you, and you can take the money and use it for the salaries so that you will have that extra $11,000. And you can give the teacher of these wonderful students I have her $4,900. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mr. Fetterman, followed by Kyle Bove, B-O-V-E.
Good evening. Kind of a long night tonight. I just have a few words to say to you. I've heard a lot of comments here, and you've heard a lot of comments also. ITEP is here for a purpose. It's to attract businesses to come to Louisiana and to East Baton Rouge Parish. It also has a downside. If you don't invest, what happens? The tax base starts to erode. It goes down. So you need companies to come in and continue to invest in the organization, invest in the company, invest in the program that they have here. If they don't, what happens? Now, I've heard this comment that Exxon won't leave. Well, all you need to do is just go down the river, Chalmette Refinery. Now, Exxon may not go through and remove the entire refinery. They have done it in the past. I can guarantee you that. The Melford Haven refinery over in Wells, that was what happened with it. They sold it off to the Saudis. But what they end up doing is they don't invest in the refinery, the operation, and eventually they sell it off to somebody else who will not be like an Exxon. So since 1970, Exxon has divested itself of about 20 refineries throughout the world. Now, I've heard this comment about taxes. Okay, they're not paying enough in taxes. The reality is, they pay a lot in taxes, particularly in the upstream side. They pay a lot in royalties, okay? And those go to governments or states or various entities. There's a lot of taxes that are paid out by the corporation. So I'm gonna ask you to, you know, everyone says, "We want to do the right thing." To me, the right thing is to go ahead and let's approve the ITEP exemptions and move on with it. And now that we have rules, we ought to be able to get beyond that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Bove, followed by Adam Knapp.
Hi, my name is Kyle Bove. I'm Vice President of Resource Development and Marketing at Capital Area United Way. I'm here tonight on behalf of our staff, as well as our CEO, George Bell, who could not be here tonight. Capital Area United Way fights for the health, education, income stability, and basic needs of every person in our 10 parish community. This fight wouldn't be possible without our donors, volunteers, local nonprofits, and corporate partners who have enabled us to improve lives over the last 94 years. We partner with nearly 400 corporations and organizations throughout the capital area every year. One corporation and its employees have consistently been our largest contributor, both of dollars and volunteer hours, ExxonMobil. Over just the past 20 years, ExxonMobil and its employees have generously contributed nearly $25 million to Capital Area United Way. These dollars have helped hundreds of thousands of individuals and families right here in our local community through quality education programs, basic needs assistance like food and shelter, initiatives designed to help people become more financially stable, and much more. Last year alone, 459 ExxonMobil employees gave 2,239 hours of volunteer time through our annual Season of Caring. Because of their generous sponsorship and support, we were able to conduct 29 projects with their employees at local nonprofits, which generated a total impact of $55,280. In addition to Season of Caring, ExxonMobil employees volunteer as members of our Board of Directors, Program Investment Committee, Women United, African-American Leadership Council, emerging leaders, and more. Simply put, Capital Area United Way wouldn't be the same without ExxonMobil. Without ExxonMobil, we wouldn't be able to help more than 200,000 people per year through our funded programs and initiatives. Without ExxonMobil, our ability to impact the community would suffer greatly. As we move into a new year, we encourage everyone to truly reflect on what ExxonMobil and corporations like it have contributed to Baton Rouge and our surrounding parishes. Their contributions cannot be overstated. We continue to be grateful for their support as a corporation and for the support of every single ExxonMobil employee who has helped us along the way. Our greatest need right now is each other. To live better, we must live united. Thank you.
Thank you. General Honoree? I'm sorry, Adam, you were next. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all making time to hear through all of our comments tonight, and I want to share a few remarks. And as a father of three children, proud parent of kids in East Baton Rouge Parish Schools, and my family continues to be proud to entrust our children to your leadership and care. Our organization, the Baton Rouge Area Chamber, proudly supports these projects and wholeheartedly endorses their adoption by you for a number of reasons. We've been spending a lot of time with Exxon courting additional investment from them, visiting their corporate headquarters, and talking about what future investments look like. As you've heard, they've announced that they've been making a $50 billion Gulf South strategy, and our goal as your economic development partners is to try to secure as much of that investment in the capital region as we possibly can. Following the process matters, and really, I want to make sure we emphasize that the tax climate itself does matter for all of our citizens, for our small businesses, our large businesses, for growing economic activity. The company has followed the guidelines as they have been provided by Louisiana Economic Development, starting in 2016 after the executive order when the company made its application notification to the state of Louisiana. They made the investment following the policy guidelines that were provided by LED, by the state at the time, to put in their advanced notification as was provided at the time. The state previously also exempted, as you know, 100% over a 10-year period. They've changed that to only exempting 80% so that taxes can begin to be paid and will begin to be paid by the company and other companies right away so that they are begin to be paid by the company and other companies right away so that they are contributing to the community's needs. The company has also acknowledged that they intend to follow the guidelines that tonight you've adopted that require that they provide their notification and get their, secure their approval going forward in advance of starting construction. And so now that a new policy framework is in place in East Baton Rouge by this school board and by the Metro Council, we expect and we will advise all projects to follow that guidance as has been requested by you and by the Metropolitan Council. And we provided the letter of support to you that's on the documents to tell you that our team also provided a model of analysis as we said we would on projects so that you have that information available to you. It shows that over a 20-year horizon, the amount of taxes to be paid exceed the ITEP abatement that is requested. On both the value of the taxes, as we've said, on both of these applications, you'll see that it exceeds independently. We think it's smart to continue to support a company at a time when we have seen other layoffs in the community and we've seen changes in our dynamics in the last week or two, and we think it's smart to continue to partner with companies who are making investments and where we have opportunities to continue to grow jobs in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. General Honoree, is he still here? Next would be Gretchen Lamp. She's here. And then following her will be Camilla Pugh. We'll get you a cup of coffee in a second.
I hope so. Because I'm going to need it. Mr. Drake, Chairman Goday, congratulations. So good to see you all. I can't wait until we get in front of the legislature at the Appropriations and Revenue Committee. That's what I still call it. I forget you all have another name for it here in Louisiana. And when we ask for that funding that we need for our schools, I'm sure hoping that Exxon and all these people in here are going to be there cheering us on and saying that they're going to help us get that additional $600 per student that we're missing from the 15% that we've lost in the cost of living expense. Because I tell you what, we need good neighbors to come and do that. Okay? I'm not arguing about ExxonMobil. They're only doing what they're supposed to physically do as a responsible entity and business. What I am arguing about is the policy. I sometimes wonder what kind of policies get made by people without not looking at what is the unexpected consequence of the policy that you've made. If you haven't looked at the Louisiana Paradox, take time to look at that particular film strip, what do you, we used to call it film strip, PowerPoint. You can see it on YouTube. We are number one in resources in the United States. We are a tremendously rich state. We're number 50th in poverty of our individual citizens. How did we get there? It's because we don't have enough revenue coming in. We rank at the bottom because our citizens get hit with more corporate exemptions than any other state in the union. We're not getting the revenue we need to do what we need to do. So by renewing your charter schools tonight, again, you've taken money out of the general fund of the school system. It just goes floating out the door somewhere else, and we don't have it within here to make the regular schools, our public schools, work. We need that money. We need the money right now that would be going to these exemptions. As a matter of policy, it's not good policy to give away money when you need it, and you're looking at, right now probably for this year, we're about $9 million out by the time we end of the year, but if we look to next year, we will look at probably a $23 million deficit. If we can't figure out where to get the revenue or we start cutting our budgets drastically, that's your decision. I think you need to turn them down. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Camilla Pugh, followed by Jessica Pranjay. If I'm murdering that name, I apologize. Ms. Pugh?
Thank you. My name is Camilla Pugh. I have a grandson at McKinley High. He's interested in running, so I inquired about the track program at the school. I learned that while the school has a track program for boys and girls, there's virtually no money to run the program. As I understood it, the money to run each program has to be raised by the coaches involved. The most profitable way for the track program to earn money is by hosting track meets. This way, they raise money from the ticket proceeds and the concessions. But McKinley cannot host a track meet because their track is a substandard dirt and gravel track. They are in a catch-22 situation. The dirt track means no meets. No meets means no money. No money from meets makes it more difficult to fund the program. This means call washes and candy sales. McKinley is the only high school which does not use, have a usable track, I am told. This situation is unlikely to change before 2023, when the school is scheduled to be updated. That is four long years from now. If the ITEP program were properly implemented, maybe we wouldn't have had to vote an additional road tax in December. Maybe our public safety officials would have an adequate budget. Maybe our school system wouldn't be facing, I saw $30 million in the paper, a 30 million, a deficit. Maybe schools like McKinley wouldn't be hurting. Our schools, our roads, and our public safety need additional revenue. Please use ITEP the way it is supposed to be used. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jessica Pranjak. And then next would be Noel Allison.
Good evening. So my name is Jessica Pranjak, and I am the Workforce Development and Communications Manager with the Greater Baton Rouge Industry Alliance. And I'd like to bring up that I was born and raised in Baton Rouge. I went to LSU here in Baton Rouge, and I now work and own a home here in Baton Rouge. And I would like to urge the Board tonight to please vote in favor of any ITEP applications that come forward so long as they adhere to the standards set by LED. We believe that these standards were put in place to stabilize the business environment in our state, and if we do not allow these rules and standards to work as they were intended, then our state will continue to be viewed as too unpredictable for investment. As I'm sure many in this room have heard, we have had three major companies announce shutdowns in the last week. These are Georgia Pacific, the BASF Plant in Zachary, as well as Thompson Piping in Zachary. The Georgia Pacific shutdown alone has put at least 600 people out of work, and our office has actually received numerous phone calls from these people seeking advice on what to do and where to try and find work. Fortunately, we do have other businesses in our area that are willing to hire some of these people, and some of these businesses include ExxonMobil in Baton Rouge, but also SNF Flopalm and Dow Chemical over in Plaquemine. We've even had International Paper call us and offer what they called a large number of jobs to these out-of-work people, and this large number of jobs was 20, and these jobs were spread across the United States outside of Louisiana. So again, please keep in mind that we have at least 600 people now out of work. So to answer the question, why are these facilities shutting down? As the Exxon managers pointed out earlier, as technology improves over the years, it's imperative for facilities to continue to invest to grow and modernize in order to stay competitive, which of course costs money. However, corporate headquarters are less inclined to invest in facilities in our state if we continue to have an unstable and unpredictable business climate. We as a state have a system in place set by our economic development leaders to determine the application of programs such as ITEP, and we need to allow the system to work as it's intended in order to allow our state to grow. I would also just like to emphasize that industry does in fact pay taxes to our state, and ExxonMobil happens to be the largest contributor in property taxes in the last year, with $33 million across the state. I don't know the exact number for this parish in particular, but $33 million in property taxes to the state. If you look over at Ascension Parish, their schools are performing very well, their communities are being developed, and they are also a heavily industrial parish. If our community feels that East Baton Rouge is failing due to money or lack thereof, then we need to look at the system of how our money is being allocated rather than pointing fingers at those who are contributing to our community. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next would be Ms. Allison, followed by Robin Mulder.
I wanted to commend you guys for unanimously approving the resolution that began, "The education of Louisiana's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our state is built." I'm asking you to put this economic foundation of our state first. Don't fall for this carrot-and-stick routine of inflated promises of jobs and economic growth and ambiguous threats to take those growth opportunities elsewhere. Allow me to let my nerd flag fly here for a second. On this spreadsheet, you can see at line, row 88 is this whole section, that's talking about the refinery. So jobs at the refinery in '97, '98, as reported by Exxon, were at 2,724. In 2016, 2017, at the refinery, as reported by Exxon, they were down to 1,256. Then, row 89 is where the polyolefin plant numbers begin. In '98, '99, they reported those jobs at 380. Now in '16, '17, they're at 242. I don't call that growth. As a stakeholder in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System, I have five children. We have been attending public schools for the eight years that we've lived in this community. I need predictability, that the school board is going to act in the best interest of the schools and students in this district. Don't prioritize corporate profit margins over a fully funded education budget. As a citizen, I affirm my responsibility to pay property taxes that fund schools and infrastructure in this city and this state, and I expect you to hold Exxon and our other corporate citizens to that same standard. Thank you.
Thank you. After this speaker, I mean, this is Robin Mulder. After this will be Steve Tifaso, if I'm pronouncing, reading that correctly.
I'm a professional mechanical engineer. I've been doing work for 40 years in that field. I do not work for Exxon, never worked for Exxon, and I'm sure after this, never will work for Exxon. I will never be, I do not work for a company that'll ever be in front of this board asking for an ITEP exemption. Tonight, let's look at the hood on these two exact exemptions you're being asked to approve on this measure. I read them. They were published by the Metro Council. I did, you say you've read things? You know what the Bentley-Nevada system is? You know what one is? Okay, good. So you know, that's a routine replacement of an electronic control system for vibration monitoring of rotating equipment. Right. They have to replace it because it's obsolete, you can't get the parts anymore. This is routine capital. This isn't a project that's building a big plant. They're talking big-picture stuff. The details are, this is a dog's breakfast of small capital projects doing repairs, especially the polyolefin plant. I guess the expansion on the refinery might have a small part of big picture. These requests and every other request you're going to get for the next few years are mostly the little projects that I do for a living. This is the stuff, this is things they have to do that accounting rules require them to capitalize and therefore hit the property tax rolls. The electronic systems depreciate on a 10-year schedule, which means by the time the ITEP exemption's over, there'll be zero tax money from that. The petroleum depreciation rate from the state of Louisiana is 20 years, so half of that money will be gone before you see a dime of taxes. And then, of course, the 30-year stuff, 2/3 will be. That's how you wind up with plants with $80 million in the tax base on a 200 and something million dollar investment. Okay? These jobs, this is routine maintenance work that's being done, and Entergy will be in front of you asking for their ITEP as well. I would imagine that's why they're here. You're going to see a lot of ITEPs. Each and every one should be examined individually, not a big picture, but is this an actual big investment that's going to help create jobs, or is this just them asking for a tax abatement on their routine water heater replacement? That's what this stuff is. This is routine, small cap. This isn't big picture.
Thank you. Next would be Steve Tifaso.
Good evening. My name is Steve Tifaro. Sorry for my handwriting there. No problem. I'm the technical supervisor at the Baton Rouge Polyolefins Plant, which puts me a long way from where the decisions get made, where money is spent, and which state, but it does put me pretty close to new engineers. I'm the direct supervisor of a lot of new engineers. Their story's very similar to mine. First came to Baton Rouge in 2011, interning with ExxonMobil. Did another internship in 2012 and started full-time 2013 at the Polyolefins Plant and been living here since. With new engineers, they are attracted to high-tech, modern facilities, reliable facilities. A reliable facility is an environmentally friendly facility. It's a safe facility. Engineers are retained at those kinds of facilities. Engineers tend to make very good volunteers. When it comes to diversity, engineers are a very diverse group, so ExxonMobil brings the diversity to Baton Rouge. Along with volunteering, ExxonMobil engineers tend to be very community-aware. They give a lot of their own time, not just company time that we schedule volunteering events. They give a lot of their own time on the weekends. So we appreciate that a lot. It's something I've seen a lot of. They make very good volunteers also because they're often coming here single and not knowing anybody. So they, they get to know their community very well that way, too. Thanks for your time. Let's all head.
Thank you very much. Next would be Kirk Green, followed by Eric Valenciano.
Hello once again, new Board members. Y'all get to meet me. We're going to try to make this short. Very simple here. I have a child in your public schools. I teach in your public schools. This is not about money. It's about our children, my child. I want to know one thing. Which one of you is going to meet my child tomorrow when you vote for this and say, "I'm sorry, Sam, that money is more important than you are. Exxon is more important than your education and your future." Which one of y'all is going to volunteer right now, say, "I'm going to vote for this, but I'm going to meet Mr. Green's daughter tomorrow and say the money is more important than you and your future?" Because that's what you're saying with this vote. Gentlemen, y'all are new on the board. Please, please. I've met both of you. I know y'all take a lot of thought about these things, and I appreciate that you do this. Think about it. They're saying economic development. I was born in this state in the '70s. They had the ITEP program. Growing up here in the '80s, they had the ITEP program. Look around where you live. Where's the economic development where you live? They keep promising, they keep promising, they keep promising. Where is it in your neighborhoods? Some of them have it in their neighborhoods, and they'll be happy to vote for it because their neighborhoods look like them. Sorry, this is the way things go here. They've been promising since the day I was born in the '70s. It's not in all neighborhoods. It's not for my kids, it's not for some of y'all's kids. Now, some of their kids don't even go to these public schools. So they're more than happy to take money away from my child because their child will never see a public school in their entire life. Mine's been in nothing but public schools her entire life and has made it to Baton Rouge Highway hard work, overcoming the obstacles. That's what we need to look at. What are we doing here with these kids? Are we here for the children, or are we here for the money? What is it? Okay? Picture of my daughter, $5 bill. Which one is more important to you? My daughter or this? Is this your guide? Is this what you bow down in service to? Or is this what up there, this is what's important to you? Which one? Her or this? That's your decision tonight. And if it's this, this is what you're going to need to run on. You're going to need to go get as much of this as you can because this is what should be important to you, not this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Valenciano, followed by Chris Barker.
Thank you for having us this evening. Thank you for having us this evening. My name's Eric Valenciano. I'm the Facilities Improvement Section Supervisor at our Polyolefins Plant here in Baton Rouge. I am born and raised here in Baton Rouge, graduated from LSU in Electrical Engineering. I am on the ExxonMobil LSU recruiting team. I go back to LSU and recruit these engineers to work at our facilities here in Baton Rouge and Texas, or Baytown and Beaumont facilities as well. I get to see firsthand the projects, the students, the projects, and the jobs that go to Texas instead of Louisiana. So, just wanted to touch on, in order to get these projects to come back to Louisiana, we need to have a business environment that encourages that capital investment and job-creating activities. Right? I ask that you support this ITEP application this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barker. And that's going to be followed by Wendell Lindsey.
Good evening. My name is Chris Barker. I work in ExxonMobil Property Tax Department. I just wanted to quickly point out a few points, some of which have been made before. First of all, the decisions for these projects were made two and three years before the first executive order came out. So, those investments were made because there was a tax incentive for Louisiana. Most other states do have tax incentive programs. Our total 2017 investment was around $300 million. $67 million is before you tonight, because after taking away the exclusions of the new program, that's all that's left. So, that's what we're prepared to bring to you today. We continue to follow each version of the new rules as they come out, but are continued to be singled out and negatively publicized for doing so, for some reason. Texas, on the other hand, has a predictable tax structure, which we continue to invest in. We're encouraged to invest in Texas, but when it comes to Louisiana, it just seems like they're not as appreciative as that. I think all we're asking you today is just a signal that you're still willing to accept capital investment from not just ExxonMobil, but other manufacturers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lindsey, to be followed by Laverne Semino.
I'm Wendell Lindsey here on behalf of Louisiana Common Cause. I want to thank you, and I know everyone here wants to thank you, for the attention you've shown us through this marathon meeting, and all of you appear to have paid attention. I'm just, I'm really, really impressed, really am. And I'll try to be very quick. I suggest to you that your job in deciding on these applications is really very simple. On one hand, you just weigh the good that will come by granting the application, and on the other hand, you weigh the good if you would take the taxes involved and invest it in the school system and in our children. Now, on the granting the application side, much has been said about the fact that the work has already been done, so therefore it's not going to create any more jobs. I don't really know about the equities of waiting or not waiting, but I do note that there's been no suggestion that Exxon's decision would have made any difference if the application had been denied before they did the work. In the materials that are out in the lobby, backup materials, I noticed the analysis done by Dr. Jim Richardson of LSU. I know Jim. He is a person of the highest integrity, and he's thoroughly, thoroughly capable. But I suggest to you that that kind of analysis is really not appropriate here. His analysis is developing the economic impact. And in this case, what you have to do, I suggest, is that you need to evaluate the impact of investing in our children, in our children's minds. And you really can't do that in those kind of terms. It's investing in pipes and machinery on one hand, and our children on the other. I believe that Louisiana is the only state that exempts school taxes. And perhaps the reason for that, perhaps the reason the other states do not exempt them, is because it's so obvious that investing in education is so important. Thanks again for your attention.
Let's see, Laverne Semino. And the next speaker would be Douglas Maloson.
My name is Laverne Semino. I'm a nationally board-certified teacher. I'm an ESL instructional specialist at Woodlawn Elementary. My little ESL subgroup scored better than 93% of the state of Louisiana. On August 2nd, East Baton Rouge Parish employees received an email saying that no school system resources could be used for political activity. However, this morning, I found it very curious in my email box to find an email from Mr. Rory D'Necola from the Baton Rouge Public Affairs portion of ExxonMobil. Now, that, I checked around in my building, it went to everybody in the building. So, somehow Exxon got ahold of our emails and sent a blanket email across the board. I just want to say, right now, it's about 5:00 to 11:00. If this meeting lasts very much longer, I'm going to be going into my 60th year at the East Baton Rouge Parish School System School of War.[990.13][990.13](Applause)
Mr. Douglas Maloson, followed by Charles Justice.
Hey, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Douglas Maloson, and I work in the Environmental Group at the Baton Rouge Complex. I'm a lifelong Louisiana resident, graduated from LSU and stayed in Baton Rouge. Reside right here in Mid-City. My wife spent nearly 20 years as an elementary school teacher in the East Baton Rouge Parish School System. I'm here to urge you to support ExxonMobil's ITEP application. I want Louisiana's economy to prosper and grow. ExxonMobil recently announced it is investing more than $20 billion in the Gulf Coast. I want those investments and opportunities to come to Baton Rouge. I'm proud to call Baton Rouge home, and I want to stay in Baton Rouge, and I want my children to stay in Baton Rouge. This is a unique opportunity to make a statement that we want Baton Rouge to grow economically. We must be competitive to grow opportunities for the future and ensure the success of Baton Rouge and Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charles Justice and Lauren Justice. You can speak separately if you'd like.
I'll go first. Board members, superintendent, my name is Charles Justice. I'm a consultant engineer by trade. I'm one of the few people here in this room that probably says, you know, I see all sides of this. My father left as the highest-paid hourly employee from Exxon ever. Myself, I worked in Exxon subcontracted for a few years. My wife is a teacher. She's a good, she's a really good teacher. And my son goes to school here. There's four sides of this story. The plants, the teachers, the parents, and the most important that you seemingly are forgetting, but the kids. If we could remember back, first chart that Exxon put on that board, it had lines and dots showing three lines going over to Texas. I would rather Exxon give another solid line to Texas and have to pay taxes and help with education and better a child's life than to start another project here or fix another project here and rob our children of more tax dollars. Let's not confuse growth and taxes versus the taxes they get exempt from every year. Can they move? Yeah. They can move to Texas. But first, they're going to run this city into the ground with what they have and possible have failures, other things amongst. They're a business. Of course, they're going to come to you and say, "Hey, can I get this for free? Daddy, can I have this? Daddy, can I have that?" Yeah. That's what they're going to do. But they wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't so cheap in our city, and they wouldn't continue to do this. If we would be like other states that are around us, we'd make them pay for the land that they have, and we'd make them pay reasonably to stay here. And lastly, they do replenish their jobs. You would think that I would have wanted to go and get the retirement like my father did and be able to have the money that my father did and everything else, besides sitting in a cubicle, which I couldn't do. As I stand before you, there's enough suits from Exxon here. I couldn't have it on my conscience to do the things that are done there, some of the safety issues and everything else, and to also, they don't hire from here. They mostly hire from out of state.[1270.41][1270.41](Applause)
Next speaker after this will be Clay Fuller.
Excuse my resources, they have nothing to do with what I'm about to say. I was planning, because I have children to teach tomorrow. So, I'm coming to you, just like Drew Brees goes every Sunday, to Mr. Kamara, and he throws that ball out there, and you know what, baby? We going to Atlanta. And we are going, and we're going to take these children with us, because the only way that we can motivate these children is by putting their future first. I'm going to tell you, every Exxon person that's come up here, whoever, "Oh, I went to LSU." But baby, where did you get that elementary education? Where did your middle school education come from? Where did your high school education come from? I'm not proud to say it. I went to private school all my life, and you know what? My education could have been so much better in public school. But the public schools in the '80s and '90s are just the same as they were right now. We haven't moved. It's a problem. But my baby goes to EBR schools. I teach in EBR schools, because I'm on this, one team, one mission, and I'm going to the top. And I'm going to take those kids with me, and I'm not going to let them stop. And I know this will get back to my principal, and tomorrow morning, she'll give me a high-five. And she'll say, "You know what, Ms. Justice? I appreciate you putting your face out there. You're not afraid, because you know what? I don't have just two children. I have about 239 about right now. They still call me, they text me. Ms. Justice, guess what? Last year, I had a reading problem, but you know what? I scored mastery on my leap." You know what? That is what I work for. I may only have $2.37 left in my checking account right now, and we got paid, what, two days ago?[1385.41][1385.41](Laughter) But you know what? I'm going to work tomorrow, and I'm going happy, and I'm going proud, despite being here till almost midnight, and I'm going to let them kids know, there's people out there that love you, they fight for you, and they want to do what's best for you. So, now it's the time. We want them to do the best for us. We want those scores. We want them to show how awesome EBR is. Now, it's your turn. You have the ball, just like Kamara has, and you have to show me what you're going to do with it. We are going to Atlanta, and we're not. But like that mayor at Atlanta said, she done stirred up the hornet's nest.[1420.66][1420.66](Laughter) Because I know every Saints fan has done said, "I don't care if I have a ticket, I don't care if I have a hotel room, I'm going to be in Atlanta, because she said she didn't want us here." And as far as all these corporations, I appreciate the minute peanuts they have thrown at us to help our classrooms. I appreciate it, but it's not enough. And it's time that we say enough is enough. Our kids come first. And when I go home, I'm going to kiss both my kids goodnight and say, "I'm sorry I missed your afternoon, and I'm sorry you had to sit at the boring school board meeting this afternoon, but you know what? I did it for you."[1455.83][1455.83](Applause)
Next is Clay Fuller, and Stephanie Carlisle after that.
My name's Clay Fuller. I work in property tax for ExxonMobil. First, I just wanted to run through a few clarifications on numbers that have been thrown around a little bit tonight. I know that some advanced notification numbers have been put out, and I just wanted to walk you through real quick how those work. So, you put in estimates for whatever project that you're going to do beforehand. That's why it's an advanced notification. You're notifying the state of work that you plan to do. And then later on, you file the actual application, which has the numbers upon which your contracts that you're held to by the state are based. So, just running through that. Also, the characterization that equipment with a 10-year life will be at zero value by the time that the exemption's over, that's incorrect. Property tax depreciation doesn't work like your standard book depreciation, because a piece of property, even if it's 50 years old, if it's sitting out there, it has some residual value. So, per the LTC state depreciation tables, it sits at a floor value of around 30%, so it doesn't completely go away. Also, the Fastlane headcount data that's historically been submitted, that was before this program was really tied to job creation. So, those job numbers were just snapshots in time in order to make our filing deadlines. So, that's a bit of a mischaracterization as well. And I can tell you, as far as the characterization, that this is all a maintenance-type work. I went through personally on the asset listings for these applications and separated out any environmental work, any replacement in kind. So, in other words, if we have a 50-horsepower motor out there and replace it with a 50-horsepower motor, it's not included. And there's $80 million of restricted amount that went directly onto the rolls for the refinery alone from these projects. Really, in the end, what we're asking for is predictability. My work in property tax covers Oklahoma and Texas, too. Both those states have capital investment exemption programs, and neither one of them, neither one of those states do we see the kind of, you know, targeted attention or this much uncertainty. And we really just need to be, we need predictability so that I can tell my business how much we think we're going to have to pay. Thank you.
Ms. Carlisle, and followed by that be Ms. Hill, and I think it's Carmen Neshia. I may have butchered that, but Ms. Hill? Okay, thank you.
Hey, good evening. Thank you to all of you for making time to meet with me and Megan and Rory about these applications. I know you guys' job is not economic development, but you now have the gift of ITEP, right? So, you do have to be part of the decision process. And I think, you know, when I reflected on listening to the speakers tonight, I kind of changed what I wanted to say. And when you think about economic development, you're not working for LED, you know, you're not working for the chamber, but you do have a job to help us find work for our students across the parish and try to keep them here. And I'm a Baton Rouge native. You guys know that. I have fought hard to stay in Baton Rouge my entire career, because I believe in this community. And I think, right now, we should all be happy in this room that there is a company hiring and that we're going to be hiring lots of people, and they are our students, right? We want our students to be part of those jobs. So, we need your help tonight, because I think all of the singling out of Exxon that you've seen over the past year has really attracted a lot of attention from the corporate level, because they don't see that in Texas. They don't see that when our counterparts in Texas go and ask for property tax exemptions based on upcoming investment. And I also want to say, my job for the company is communications. So, I have been talking to some of you, gosh, it's been maybe two and a half years, about these applications. And I will tell you that we tried everything to do, that we could do, to listen to the city parish and make sure that we filed these under the fairest rules. And that is why we were asked to wait until the new rules were promulgated, so that the parish entities would be able to enjoy 20% of the abatement right off the top. I also want to say one final thing. While we all want jobs here, and jobs are certainly important, and I'm very excited that my company is helping out with some of the Georgia Pacific employees, one thing that can help the school system, can help all of our taxing jurisdictions, is if we increased our capital investment. That means we're putting more assets, more equipment into our sites. And like Clay was describing, those things reach a floor value of 30... And like Clay was describing, those things reach a floor value of 30%. So you're gonna collect taxes on them for years and years and years and years until they're removed off the property. So it's like collecting taxes at 30% on a car that you don't use that sits at your house. So, this is very important for us to continue to bring new equipment onto our site so that your property tax base will grow and we'll pay more property taxes. And then the last thing I want to say, and I'll be done, is that lots of questions tonight about whether ExxonMobil pays taxes here in Baton Rouge. We pay about $100 million annually. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hill, and as Ms. Hill's coming up, it's been a very long night, and I appreciate the attention that everyone's shown, but please hang in there a few more minutes, and let's be respectful of the speakers and hold down the murmuring and side comments while they're making their points. Thank you very much. Ms. Hill?
Yes. I would like to bring to you a real-life application for an EBR teacher that only receives step increases. This past year, my step increase was $1,247 every week, not a raise. So now, I would like to ask you Exxon employees and representatives, did you all receive a raise this past year, or did you receive a step increase? Furthermore, I worked two extra jobs, three days out of the week, to keep up with the cost of living expenses as a single mother with a very active high school son. In addition, my salary has to stretch over 12 months when I only get paid for nine. So, when will EBR take into consideration the real-life experiences of their teachers and students and stop allowing businesses to come and take advantage of us? That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Next would be Ms. Dina Cola, followed by Bonnie Morris.
So it's Mrs. Rory Dina Cola, just for everybody to know. And for the quick, quick thing, how I got your email addresses, it's public, it's on the website. It's very simple. So, nothing secretive, no one secretive gave me your emails. I just want everybody to know that very quickly so that y'all wouldn't accuse anybody of giving us anything secretive. So I am 20-year employee this year. Dad retired, godfather retired. I've met with a lot of you, as well as Stephanie and Megan. This is going on three-year process. The biggest issue that we keep hearing is that we're not against ExxonMobil. We're against the policy. If you're against the policy, then why do we always have to say ExxonMobil? Why is it not just the industry or a company? We can disagree on policy. I am, I am, everybody can disagree and have different opinions. And I had, we had this conversation today with someone. I am fine with having a disagreement and having a different opinion. It's what makes the world. Everybody has to be different, have different, it's uniqueness. It's how you have a conversation with someone to have a different opinion. But that's not what this has been. This has been singling out of our company on a regular basis, every day. Social media, emails, flyers, everything. We would like to do, have the predictability. We have followed the rules. We've done everything that the policy has asked. We've done what was asked of our company. We do pay taxes. After the credits, after the rebates, it's $100 million annually. We're the largest one in the parish. We are the largest contributor, United Way. We are the largest contributor to East Baton Rouge School System. I'm very proud of the company I work for. We're not just a contributor of finances, we're a contributor of volunteers. 32,000 hours last year in volunteer service. That's us in your schools making a difference. And if this company is not here, and we've seen plants close, like has been said before, then the people are not here. I thank you for your time this evening, and for all the time when you've met with us. I know it's been a long night, and I appreciate it. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next would be Ronnie or Bonnie Morris. Ronnie? Okay. Mister, I'll get it right this time.
I'm gonna read from prepared remarks, so I can honor the three minutes here. So excuse me if I'm quick on this. My name, good evening, my name is Ronnie Morris. Mr. Drake, President of the Godey Board, thank you for your time this evening. I am a Louisiana Public High School graduate. I'm also a Louisiana Public University graduate. I'm currently, I am an ExxonMobil employee. I'm the Site Utilities Business Coordinator for the ExxonMobil complex. I also serve as Treasurer of the Basis School in South Baton Rouge. I'm also founder and president of We Produce grads. It's a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization dedicated to providing STEM education to public school students using aquaponics technology. I've addressed the board previously, and I appreciate the opportunity this evening. As one of 3,000 ExxonMobil employees in the Baton Rouge community, I've thoroughly enjoyed volunteering my time and resources in areas of need and personal interest. Education has been my personal interest since Exxon took a chance on me in 1995 as a 35-year-old college graduate with an electrical engineering degree. Initially, I worked with Kathy Orns and the Junior Achievement Program for 15 years. We utilized a computer simulation program to create a competitive business environment in the classroom. Students learned and applied eight different conventional business concepts to compete against each other for product branding and product profitability during each session. Bottom line, we're teaching the kids to compete, because that's reality. Two years ago, I found an interest in STEM education. And with the support of this board, thank you again, and our community partners, ExxonMobil, Tony Seafood, the LSU College of Education, the LSU Veterinary School, the Hugh and Angelina Wilson Foundation, and the Foundation for East Baton Rouge Schools, we've established aquaponics research and development labs at Brookstown Middle School and Estrema High School. Today, almost 200 students benefit from this hands-on innovative approach to STEM education. They learn the STEM concepts associated with operating their lab. They learn what they can grow, how to grow it, and they serve their product in the school cafeteria. But what impresses me the most is the responsibility and pride of ownership I've seen when students give tours to the public. Our students' accomplishments have been recognized regionally, and now they're competing for national awards. Dr. Nadine Mann recently accepted an invitation from Region 4, where we, Louisiana educators, will present our program to 80 schools in Houston, Texas. At our second annual Brookstown White Coat Ceremony on November 28th, we filled the school gym to celebrate our students' accomplishments. My wife told me that one of the dads even came out of the seat and said, "That's my boy." As an ExxonMobil engineer, I appreciated the comments from Mayor Broome, Board Member Dawn Collins, and Board Member Evelyn Ware Jackson, who all spoke about the value of career pathways made possible by STEM education. It's great if you're one of the very few who become a professional athlete, but there's a huge demand for educated professionals that offer lifelong, well-paying careers. As an ExxonMobil employee, I've worked at 31 different facilities globally. However, 11 of those facilities, 11 of those facilities are no longer owned by ExxonMobil. Can you give me just one more minute?
Not a whole minute, sir. One sentence, let's finish up.
Okay. In addition to the flexibility and support I received for my interest in the community, my wife and I also took advantage of the ExxonMobil Matching Gifts Foundation program, where employee contributions are matched 3 to 1 to U.S. universities. Since 2004, we funded the Macaulay-Sher leadership award, which benefits students pursuing a career in education with demonstrated leadership in community service activities.
Thank you.
This year, the endowment will exceed $500,000.
We're gonna have to cut it here. Thank you.
Providing $20,000 annually in scholarship.
Sir, please, thank you. So, the last two cards I have are Jared Hayes and Belinda Davis, both of who are in opposition but do not want to speak. It's been a very long evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you. I really appreciate the attention and time of both the board and the audience. I think we've had a very respectful conversation. And again, we might disagree on policies, but I think as people, we all have children in our heart, and it's just a matter of how to get there the best way. So with that, Ms. Bernard.
Thank you, Mr. Godey. I've examined everything that I've been given. I've looked very carefully. I looked at the analysis provided by Jim Richardson. I looked at the PowerPoints by Exxon. I looked at all of the information provided to me from all of the community groups. And I really am very, very concerned that we might be telling business and industry that we are not interested in $6,454,000 in local sales tax and property tax that Exxon would pay on the Ultra Low Sulphur Mogas project. And I'm also concerned about the smaller polyolefins amount, which would be $100,000. So, I really want to send the signal. I think it's very, very fair that in their application, they removed anything that was just routine maintenance and environmental projects, which is what we're asking people to do in the future. Those were actually qualified to have received an exemption at this time, but they removed them anyway, which was, I think, in good faith, and they did a great service to all of us, because they just removed that equation from it. So, I really hope that what we can do is not bite the hand that feeds us. I spend my, excuse me, I listened to you.
Tonight, let's maintain the attitude, please. Thank you.
I shop, I buy groceries, I have dry cleaning, things like that. I go to restaurants. The people who serve me in the restaurants pay for daycare. They purchase catering, they spend money. Also, all of this money from Exxon, I benefit from it, even though I don't have any family members who work at Exxon, because it's a ripple-out effect. So, I spend money, that person spends money. It's, Exxon is one of our biggest economic bases in the Baton, Greater Baton Rouge area. And I did appreciate many people who were local, and local folks who live here and grew up here and are still here and working for Exxon. I think that's also wonderful. It provides us a lot of opportunities, not just their charitable giving, not just their volunteer hours, but their presence here. The fact that they're willing to spend capital dollars, large amounts of capital dollars. I would like to see us get a lot of that, grow the Gulf money. How many million, how many billion dollars is it making? $20 billion. I'd love to see us get millions of that here in Baton Rouge. And I want to send the signal that we want to be a good community partner with Exxon. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, first, I want to start with a point of clarity. I did text some people in the city finance office, and they said that it perhaps is true that Exxon may have been told to hold their application, but that would have happened on the state level. The state would have advised them to do so. Our local rules were not finalized until last month, as we had, as we too had to hold up based on states, on the state's decision to change the rules. And people are saying they want folks to be clear and give good information. And so, with respect, perhaps you were advised to wait, but it was not the city, it was on the state level. In terms of the feedback, you know, I, the what will happen if we don't give the exemptions versus the what is a fact for this school district today? What will? Exxon is going to leave or reduce its investment versus our teachers are already leaving. Businesses won't invest, and you won't get the money anyway, versus we are currently facing approximately a $30 million deficit today. Capital investment is important and great disregard investment in your own human capital. The double standard is a bit much. Corporate jobs matter. But then, our district employees don't matter, because we're not an employment agency, and Exxon has not ever said that. But that is the conversation I hear from the same people willing to entertain the argument that your jobs matter. So you're not saying it, but people are willing to entertain that for you, but not for our own staff, for their own staff that they're responsible for. Okay? We have 6,000 employees. And if we don't, we not in a position with a $30 million deficit. We just not in a position to say, "Hey, we don't need the money, because it's gonna come back around to us." We directly have a deficit today. The indirect dollars, we can't replace that in that way. And so, you know, Exxon is a tremendous community partner. I've said it before, I'll say it again. I tremendously appreciate the investment and community that Exxon makes, because you don't have to, period. You don't, you don't. Many corporations don't do it. And I can never deny that, and I will always be grateful to you for that. But in terms of a completed project, and we are facing a $30 million deficit, and we are talking about cutting jobs, as if our jobs don't also impact the economic development locally? They do. Like, that argument might work with a body that doesn't have staff the way we do. But then, when you talk about your jobs, we have to talk about ours, too. And so, thank you, those are my comments.
Yes. So I think I'm gonna ask an unconventional question. And I think, at this point, seeing how the votes may lie, which it may be split, I think there should be some type of compromise. So my question is for the Exxon executives. Are you willing to give half of the money that you would receive and pour it back into our parish, back into the schools? It's an open question.
So, I'm a journalism major, but I've learned a lot about ITAP. And as I understand it, and Chris and Clay, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think under the new rules, the way the rules are promulgated, the parish entities vote yes or no for what the state has approved. So I think that there's, I don't know if we can do a 20 or 30 or, you know, 40% of the abatement. You guys, I mean, there might be an expert in the room, but I know that in other states you can do that. I don't know if that's allowed here in Louisiana.
My understanding here is our vote is up or down as proposed and passed to us by the Board of Commerce and Industry. So legally, we can't give a 40% exemption. I think that is not your question, though. I think your question is, would you agree to contribute the 40% or whatever as a voluntary contribution? Which you probably do not have the ability to answer. But that's, I think that's the question.
So, the, yeah, the, so you're asking to contribute it back to, like, the foundation for EBR schools? And I think that we, I don't have the pay grade to make that. But the one thing that I guess is interesting, just to let you know about how our funding works. So we get money from the foundation, which is a corporate entity. So just like they have to try to compete for projects, my team has to compete for community investment. And it's not coming from the refinery or the chemical plant. Our operations can't give charitable contributions. It has to come from our foundation. So every year, I go and try to compete to get dollars to bring to Baton Rouge. But I can tell you, I work really hard at that. In Baton Rouge, we've won across the Gulf Coast. And I'm gonna keep working to get dollars here. But, you know, one thing I do encourage you guys to do, that if we have a project or a funding that we want to fund in EBR, you guys come tell me. Because if there's a need that we need to fund, I'll work everything with our foundation to make it happen. And that's really how we got NIMZI here. That's how we got $13 million from NIMZI.
Well, I ask the question because we have several needs. As you can see, we have teachers inside of the buildings that have been asking for money for years. And we also need to fund university early child education in order to move our schools forward. Which is where I would love to see those types of funds go.
And I think you guys' input is definitely important. Let us know. We can direct, we can direct fundings to the, you know, however you think it's best. We'd love to hear your opinion.
Mr. Bellew?
Thank you, and I will be brief. I appreciate everybody's passion and I know you want what's best for our school system and I assure you that everybody on this board wants what's best for our school system. When we had the resolution up for vote last year on whether we wanted to participate in the ITAP program, the reason we voted as a board that we wanted to participate because we thought it was what was best, not because it was the easiest, but we thought it was the smartest decision. Just so that everybody understands the way the ITAP program works, it encourages capital investment and in exchange, the companies, if it's granted, only have to pay 20% of the increase in property taxes. It doesn't affect any of the current property taxes they're paying. So we're not giving back money that they're currently paying, it's only on the increase in their property taxes from that capital investment. And like I said, you may have a different opinion on whether these incentives work, but in my opinion, they do and I think the benefit to our system by the expanded tax base is worth approving these programs. Thank you.
Any other comments from any other board members? Any comments from any other board members? So the motion on the floor, we can get it, I'm sorry, Ms. Jackson, Ms., where, Jackson?
I have a question, a burning question. I've heard this over and over. I've heard teachers and other groups say that we could use this, these property taxes for teacher raises and teacher pay and then I hear the argument, no, we can't, we can't do that. I would like to know, in the district, what can we fund with property taxes? Who can tell me that? Anybody?
Yeah.
It's, the property taxes are specific to what they were passed for. So whatever you collect a tax on, that's what it is attributed to. So if there's a tax abatement, those taxes, you know, again, only go flow to the particular paths that they would flow in. So if there are teacher pay raises, millages in there, then that would be, those are the only ones that could go to teacher pay raises. If they were for technology, they would go to technology. So it wouldn't all go, it wouldn't flow into some fund like a waterfall. It would be very specific to whatever that millage was passed when the voters passed it. Is that helpful?
I don't, I don't mean the, like for the tax plan, but just...
No, this is just the, these are the, yeah, these are the other taxes. These are the, the, all of the taxes that show up on my tax bill at my office every year. The 14 pages of, of, all the small...
But I mean, as the district, you know, the portion that comes to the district, what are some of the line items that the district can use when we receive these property taxes? When we, when we receive our portions?
It's the same answer. It's whatever that millage was passed for. When you get your property tax bill, there'll be, there'll be, I'm making, I was exaggerating, 40 or 50 lines. Some will go to Metro Council, some will go to security, some will go to technology, some will go to pay raise, I mean, teacher pay. So it just depends on what that is. You want to come, you want to give it a shot, Adam?
Ms. James?
James?
Because it's a common question, you know, get it all the time. I'm sure my building...
Yeah, the way Mr. Tepman described it is exactly right. There's 43.45 mils of property taxes for East Baton Rouge Parish school system and they're all designated. The only one that's not in the general fund is ADAP, .72 mils. All the rest are in the general fund for specific purposes, mostly maintenance, teacher salaries and benefits.
Ms. Dyson?
Well, I'm real excited about the offerings that we are offering to our students across the district and our CTEC Academy to train our students and to give them the mindset that they can stay in Louisiana, they can stay in Baton Rouge and we'll equip you to get ready, to be job-ready graduating from our school system. And so it's important to me, especially when we've seen what's happened with, in the last week or two with Zachary, it's so important that we, we send the message that, you know, we are educating our youth to be able to take jobs and those jobs really need to be there for them so that they can become productive members of society. And so it's a big picture for me. If it was as easy as some scenarios make it seem, we would then just be given this big pot of money and be able to say, okay, we'll give this as a, as a raise. The other thing about the raise is it's not a stipend, it's not a one-time thing and then it's built into the step and then you have to be able to sustain it. So we have to have more growth in order to be able to sustain the raise because it's built then into the step. So it's a lot more complicated, I think, than some people are explaining it as. And I'm really trying, this board member has done my, I've done a lot of reading, I've done a lot of talking and I'm, I understand all the sides to it. And if it was as easy as we'll just get this pot of money and we'll have it to use and it's just not that simple. And so I just wanted to share that. I want to have, I want to send the message that we in East Baton Rouge Parish are here to partner, we are readying our students for jobs and we need the jobs then to be there to keep our children here. I mean, I've just gone through this with my own child and with a science degree and I, it was hard to find even a female in science. So we really need to be offering growth opportunities to these companies and not just Exxon, but, you know, we need to be open for business because it's a big, big, long-term picture and it involves our grandchildren and their children. It's a big, big picture. So thank you.
Even though I agree with throwing out the lights, Ms. Collins, you're up.
We talking as if this was the polypropylene exemption, that's the right poly? Not the, not the one that was in this one. I'm talking about the one we already approved. Oh, okay, all right, thank you then. All right. We talking as if this is like the other polyolefin application which we approved, which had, which they were genuinely competing for. This is done. And what's being said sounds good if we were not in the red, but we are in the red by $30 million, period. So what could, would be, yada, 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 really doesn't matter because we are in a deficit, period. Not by one, 10, 20 million dollars, but 30 million dollars. And the project is done, like it's done, it's over. They made their decision, they started and completed the project, period. Now future, that doesn't stop us from saying and having these discussions on future projects, even with a deficit, because then it might not come at all. So yes, that's a valid point, it might not come at all because it hadn't happened yet, but this is over with, it's like done, it's coming. And so I just have to remind people the context of this conversation. Thank you.
What percentage of the new jobs are going to be student-centered? Because we have a lot of students that are in PTEC technology schools and classes and the last thing I want to see happen is that we have students who, a lot of them are considered at risk, which is why they option to go into that particular field, and the last thing I want to see happen is that when they graduate, they have no jobs. So that's a, that's a really good question that I really want to see answered tonight is what percentage of students are actually going to be hired after they graduate from high school?
So if I may, I can't give you an exact percentage, but what I can tell you, and this is something that I have invested a lot of time on, is a commitment to local hiring, specifically in East Baton Rouge Parish. I want those jobs to stay here, I want our students to stay here. I've started my career in Baton Rouge, I don't have children yet, but when I do, I want them to be able to have opportunities in Baton Rouge. We, one of the things that I'm working on is a go-local website and that's an opportunity for us to connect our hiring opportunities with local neighbors and local students. We've never done that before. We get calls, especially my team and the HR team, all the time. I have a student who's about to graduate from BRCC in process technology or ITI or some other sort of training program that relates to manufacturing. What opportunities do you have available? We have been working, my team, the public affairs team, has also been working with HR to create hiring targets specific to East Baton Rouge Parish. So I can't give you an exact number, Ms. Lanis, but I can tell you that there is, okay, there is an effort to hire locally.
I can help with some numbers. So for example, this year when I mentioned we're hiring 300 people, over half of those are operator and craft technician skills and those by large come from the local area. And in fact, we participate and sponsor the North Baton Rouge Industrial Training Initiative where we give scholarship, we give money for folks in our near neighbors to go to trade school, to go to BRCC, get their certificates and then we work with our contract partners and even ourselves to hire folks in. So it's from front to end. Over the last five years, we've hired 1,000 people and over half of those have been operators and at the craft level.
Okay. So I just, I have to be completely honest on this issue. I really, really want to support industry in a collaborative sense with this board. However, it's really hard to look past the fact that we have a $30 million deficit and the fact that we have teacher shortages within our school system. Now, I'm not saying this right here to get an amen out of anyone inside of the room. I'm saying this because this is something that is real and we have to start taking some real practical approaches. We really, I can speak for everyone, but I really want to support industry. But we have to answer the question, how do we take care of the business of the board as well? That's almost like asking me, and I have a family at home, I got my last $100 and I'm going to just give it away when my family is starving, what am I supposed to do? This is a realistic question and I really want to know, what are we supposed to do in this particular instance? When you have $30 million, you don't have enough teachers inside of your classrooms, 40 of which are core classes and we have substitute teachers inside of those rooms. That's a real, real strong issue for me and I really want to know, what are we supposed to do?
Do you want me to answer that? Okay.
It's tight, man. I'm trying to, I'm trying to work.
Everything I've done in the last probably 20, 25 years has been tied to economic development and I do support small business, I support large business, any kind of businesses. And so, you know, I'm hard-pressed on this, or at least I was hard-pressed on this until, you know, I like to have guidelines, I like to have rules in place so that I can make decisions based on those rules and those expectations, just as we spoke about earlier about having policy in place. We have something written in, as a guideline and the one word in this whole, in this whole situation is incentive and that just keeps, it keeps ringing in my ears and it has for several days. And, you know, this has taken, this has been going on for 80 years. We've given these incentives without even knowing about it, you know, for 80 years. I'm very grateful that a lot of the things that used to be included in these tax incentives are taken away and I appreciate the applicant for not asking for those certain things anymore. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, that it is, it is supposed to be an incentive and although you all in good faith waited for time to produce the application, the project is already done and, and one of them is 64 million, the other one's about three. Over time, I don't know how much the district or any of the other entities have foregone, but I'm sure it's a whole lot more than that. And I know that when new, new projects come about, I think that this board member will certainly have a different attitude about it. I would be a lot more receptive for a new project, something that's going to bring in new business, new jobs, as did the one that we approved a few months ago for North Baton Rouge. So those are my comments and, and I just want you to understand sort of where I, where I fit in this whole scenario. I just want to be fair. We, you know, when you think about what's going on across the district, across the, across the country with teachers and shortages everywhere and classrooms that are overcrowded and, and there's just so much need that we can't, we can't cover. So, you know, we need every, every little dime we can get right about now. So I appreciate you all and I appreciate the grants that you give our schools and especially those STEM-based programmings, the STEM-based programs and so, thank you.
Anyone else on the board would like to speak?
I would like to just close with one thing on my side. I think that everyone on this board shares with me the concern and care for educating all of our students. Believe me, I didn't take this job to spend till midnight tonight out of just a sense of wanting to, wanting to be able to do this. We all have a passionate care for the children and I think the biggest issue we're discussing now is the policy issue of how is the best to do that, how is the best to do that for tomorrow and how is the best to do that for 10 years from now? And regards to the budget issues and things like that, I just wanted to remind, there's an old fable about the goose that laid the golden egg and the farmer kept getting the golden eggs and every day he'd go there and get a golden egg and it was wonderful. And then he decided, well, you know, if I kill the goose, I can get all the eggs right now. And, but that's not what really happened. When he killed the goose, there was no more golden eggs. So just be aware and be careful, just be aware that this is not a wider, there's a lot of questions in this area and there is probably no perfect answer and there is no real correct answer because whatever answer is going to be, is going to be what's in the eye of the beholder. But I do want to assure you that all of us have taken this very seriously and we've given it a lot of thought and we're doing it... given it a lot of thought and we're doing it what we believe is for the long-term best of to educate the children, however the vote comes out. And I have not tried to steer votes in any way, shape or form through this. So however the vote comes out is how the vote will come out. So are there any other comments from the board members?
Mr. Howard?
A point of clarity, I know that there are two separate applications from Exxon for this particular exemption. Are we considering them on the one vote or are we taking the votes separately?
That is your choice. If you'd like to split them, we can, they can be split.
Just wanted to make sure as a point of clarity. Thanks.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the two ITEP grants as presented in a lengthy discussion. And so without any, or Mr. Howard, did I not clear you? Okay. So Madam Secretary, would you please open the machine?
Please vote.
Thank, thank you, except for that brief outburst. Thank you for the audience in having this be in a respectful meeting.